Okay.
Yeah, you should probably all turn on your mics at this point. So. So at this time, it's nine o'clock and I would like to bring to order the meeting of April thirteen twenty twenty two. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Janet, could you do the roll call, please?
Yes, Chair. Commissioner Gupta?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Here.
Chair Ramirez?
Here.
Standing presented by Monowitz, Fox, and Montes.
Thank you. Next, we have public comments for items that are not on the agenda at this point. Janet will advise the public on how they may participate during the public comment.
Thank you, Chair. I was attending the meeting on the Zoom video conference. We will use the raise hand feature in order to organize any public comments during the general public comment period. And for items on the regular agenda, I will ask those members of the public who wish to comment to click the raised hand feature to raise, to speak on that agenda item. For those joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak. Please note that members of the public must wait for their prompt in connection with each agenda item before using the raised hand function. For example, you cannot raise your hand at the beginning of a meeting for an agenda item that is later in the meeting. When you hear your name called, I will prompt you to unmute your account and inform you that you may begin speaking. You will have two minutes. And so right now we're talking about items not on the agenda. So anybody has anything, now be the time to raise your hand. And Chair, I don't see anybody with their hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Well, unless there's an objection, I will now close public comments. And then for that, then we move on to our next item. And that would be setting the agenda, taking action on the consent items. We have meetings for the meetings of March ninth and March twenty third, and also setting the resolution to be able to have remote meetings. Can we have a motion or is there anyone that would like to pull the consent agenda?
I saw move that we accept the consent agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Janet, please do the roll call. Janet, can you do the roll call?
Sorry, I was muted. Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Yes.
Chair Ramirez?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
All right, the motion passes unanimously. So we can now move to our third item on the regular agenda. Janet, could you read that for the record?
Sure, we have item number three, owner David Madwed, applicant Edward Love, file number PLN two zero two zero dash zero zero three nine two, and the location is Ocean Boulevard Moss Beach District Three. And planner is Glengia.
Okay.
Hi, this is Glenn. I'm going to share my screen. Please give me a second. Okay, good morning, planning commissioners and the members of the public. My name is Glenn Job, planner through with the Department of Planning and Building. The item before the planning commission is item three, which is for consideration of coastal development permit, non-conforming use permit, and design review permit to allow the construction of a new two thousand and forty-one square feet, two-story single-family residence, including a two hundred and six square feet attached one car garage located on a four thousand four hundred eighty-four square feet undeveloped parcel in the Moss Beach area of incorporated Seminole County. And also, this project is applicable to the California Coastal Commission. As shown on the aerial map on the right side of the screen, the project site is located on Ocean Boulevard between Posita Avenue and Burno Avenue. In the Moss Beach area, the zoning designation is one-family residential district, residential density district, mid-coast, design review district, geological hazard district, and coastal development district. The neighborhood consists of mostly single-family residences and now vacant parcels. Additionally, the bluff edge is approximately ninety feet from the property boundary, and the proposed home is approximately a hundred and twenty feet from the bluff edge. Please note that these numbers are approximate. As planning staff mentioned earlier, the project proposes a new two thousand and forty-one square feet, two-story, single-family residence, including a two hundred and six square feet attached one car garage located on a four thousand four hundred, four thousand four hundred eighty-four square feet parcel. The site plan on the right illustrate the building footprint of the house. For the site plan, the property will get access from Posita Avenue on the right side of the screen. You can see a color elevation of the house. The colors include winter gray, stone gray, and black color. As discussing the staff report, the proposed project is in compliance with the general plan relating to appearance of new development urban area design concept and infilling. Staff also analyzed the project's compliance with the local coastal policies, including locating and planning new development visual resources, geological hazards, and development near coastal bluff. Following the release of the staff report approximately ten days ago, staff received comments from Commissioner Lisa Ketchum, the Midcoast Community Council, and the California Coastal Commission. In response to these comments, which we express concerns over issues related to the project's proximity to the coastal bluff, staff concluded that further review of applicable local coastal program policies and provided additional analysis of this issues in an addendum to the staff report dated April twelve twenty twenty-two. As discussing the, in the addendum, memorandum to the planning commission on April twelve twenty twenty-two, staff proposes eight additional conditions to the recommended conditions of approval to address comments related to coastal hazards, shoreline reinforcement, damage and liability against the county, and the removal of substantially damaged and hazardous structures. Staff concludes that the additional conditions will address concerns of the competitors. Yeah, so the coastal, the coastal design review committee reviewed the project recommended approval. The committee concluded that the project design avoid direct view into neighboring residences. It's inconsistent with the style of the surrounding residents and avoid making the garage a dominant feature as seen from the street. Now, you may not see this slide previously because it was out of order. So this size is for a local coastal policies, which was discussed previously. And now, as discussed earlier, the project requests a non-conforming use permit to allow proposed residence to be constructed with reduced cover parking on a lot with non-conforming law size in with, in order to have a reasonable living space and meet the setback for area and lot coverage requirements. The applicant can request exception to the parking requirement of a minimum of two, to cover parking spaces. The reduced parking space, the reduced parking space allow, also allows the project to avoid making the garage a dominant feature seen from street as concluded by the coastal design review committee on August twelve twenty twenty-one. In addition, future occupants of the proposed residence will be able to utilize the proposed driveway for parking. As the environmental review, staff concludes that the project is categorically exempt from the environmental review pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, also my sequel guidelines, section one five three zero three, class three A, relating to the construction of one single-family residence in urban residential zone. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve the project, approve the proposed coastal development permit, non-conforming use permit, and design review permit, county file number PLN twenty twenty dash zero zero three nine two, by adopting the required findings and conditions of approval, identifying attachment A of the staff report, and additional conditions discussing the memorandum dated April twelve twenty twenty-two. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff will be available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Chair Ramirez?
Yes, please. Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, Glenn, for a great report and presentation. I just wanted to, number one, confirm that the commissioners received the addendum?
I did, yes.
Okay, okay. And so I apologize for the last minute additions to the report. I should have caught the issue with the proximity to the bluff earlier, so I take responsibility for that oversight and apologize for that. And we've, the commission has been in this place before where we have reviewed projects that didn't, first review appear to be within a specific type of geologic hazard area, but upon further review, we've concluded that, given the proximity to the bluff, it's better to be safe than sorry, if you will. And so the additional conditions that we've added are the conditions that we've used in the past after we've learned from the coastal commission what their expectations are for development in such situations. And so I think, you know, our interests are twofold here. First, number one, to have as safe of possible development, recognizing that someday it's likely that it will be undermined by coastal erosion, to have a plan for dealing with that future event, and also in, you know, the interest of the applicant avoiding an appeal to the coastal commission, which could, you know, will take a lot more time. And so if you have any questions about the conditions that we've added or any other of the conditions or the project, we're happy to try and answer them. But I just wanted to put that addendum in context for you all. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Steve. Really appreciate that clarification. Any questions from commissioners, I will call on Commissioner Ketchum.
On, no, well. No, no questions from me. Thank you.
All right.
Sorry to interrupt, Chair. I just wanted to ask Glenn to stop sharing the screen so we can see folks' faces better.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gupta?
No, I would like to hear the applicant as well and hold my questions till that time. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson, questions for staff at this time?
No questions at this time.
All right. Yeah, I don't have any questions for staff at this time either. Can we bring the, the owner or the applicant at this point?
That's me, Dave Madwed, and my wife is here, Kathleen.
Good morning.
Good morning. Go ahead and make your presentation, please.
I'm not quite sure what should be mentioned in the presentation, but my wife and I are longtime residents of the Bay Area and were frequent visitors to the coast. And we've hiked the coast for decades, actually, and my wife happened to stumble across this lot a couple of years ago. And after multiple months of exploration and investigation and review, we decided to purchase it to build our home, which we are planning to move into. And we've worked very closely with Ed over the last two years to accomplish this. As I said, we're planning on having this to be our primary residence with regards to all the issues regarding bluff retreat and the risk involved with building. I think I've done exhaustive research on this, including multiple hours and even talks with local geologists and a Dr. Graves down at UC Santa Cruz. I understand, obviously, the bluff is going to be retreating over the next decades and such. But I think, taking that into effect, you know, a lifespan of a home of sixty to seventy years, I think, is reasonable in this situation, and that's why we're going forward. We had an escrow period of almost a year and a half due to problems with the owner of, the original owner of the property and title dispute and such. So we had a long time to think about this. It wasn't a rash decision. We basically put our bid in on the property in May of twenty twenty during COVID, and it just closed about three or four months ago. So we had a long time to investigate and a long time to even back out of the whole deal if we wanted to. And you know, no one knows what's going to happen in the future, just like building in an earthquake zone like this is, or if you're on a hilltop or mudslides or whatever, there's always geo-hazards in California especially. And we are willing to take the risk, so to speak, and we would, you know, I understand the need to not hold the county or the city of Moss Beach or whoever responsible for anything that might happen. I mean, that's just something that, you know, we're willing to take. But as far as the design of the home, I think we worked very closely with Ed to make sure that it was compliant with the area. We lowered the roof line by three or four feet to mitigate any hindrances to the neighbors in the back. We have full support of our neighbors to the right and left of us. As I said, we become, we're there quite often. We're not just a one-off visitor on a weekend here or there. So we're members of the Half Moon Bay Yacht Club and pretty active there too. So we're looking forward to becoming members of the community full-time. And I'm not sure if what I've said here is helpful or what have you. But that's, that's our story, so to speak.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that. I wonder if Mr. Love would like to add anything to that?
Can you hear me? I just unmuted my.
Yes, yes, we can.
I really have nothing to say. I think Glenn and David covered pretty much everything. It's a nice home. It's a good spot, and I think they'll be very happy in it for years. And like David said, we've worked very closely together and we've worked with our structural and our geotech engineer. The foundation will be a matte slab as shown on the drawings. That was one of the questions that came up, not having peers in Graybeam Foundation. But we've never considered that. It's a matte foundation. So if you have any technical questions or anything, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, let me ask the commissioners here, see if they have questions at this time. Commissioner Gupta?
The design of the home looks, looks pretty nice. There's no doubt about that. The concerns, of course, some of the other commissioners may have this, and other people may have similar concern about the erosion and instability of the parcel. And as, as the applicant, Mr. Madwed mentioned, you have already, you are already comfortable with whatever the life of your home would be. So that is your decision. But the conditions that have been added as part of approval of this project, were you aware of some of these conditions that would be coming to you before you purchased the property?
Not all of them, but obviously, this is not the first time I've built a home. So obviously, I know that there are always conditions from planning departments all over the region. So, you know, you just, you just have to roll with the punches, so to speak, you know. I'm familiar with that.
Okay. And were some of the geological investigations or reports done prior to your closing on this parcel or before you bought it?
Yeah, as I stated, we had about a twenty-month escrow period. So we had full knowledge of the geotechnical analysis by Sigma Prime, who does a lot of the work on the coast. And I've had many conversations with both Charlie and Abby of that, the principals of that company. So I was fully aware of everything related to the parcel. And as I said, I did a lot of scholarly research on my own regarding all the issues involved. So with that knowledge, I feel fairly comfortable in proceeding. I mean, I don't feel like I'm rolling the dice and the property is going to fall in the ocean during construction. You know, climate change is real and the sea levels are rising. We all know that. And no one knows really the, what the future holds. So but using all the information that we have, I can make a fairly sound decision that in our lifetime, in our boy's lifetime, most likely it'll still be there. You know, if there's a ten-o earthquake and fifty percent of the housing stock in California is destroyed, we have no control over that, but that can't happen. So I'm a physician and I've lived through a lot of problems the last two years that something that I never thought I would confront in my career. And you just have to roll with it as it comes. And, and that's just the way my wife and I approach things. You can't predict the future, but you can prepare for it. And I think in this setting, we've prepared as well as we can with the knowledge of all the analysis that I've done and other people have done, that I think it's a safe bet in the relatively near future in the, you know, this.
In our lifetimes.
Yes, yeah.
Sorry, I missed that?
In our lifetimes. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
And understanding that what, what the new contingencies are of any ramifications that would occur with debris, et cetera, that those are, those are expected, of course. Those are not outlandish requests of the, of the new letter that was sent yesterday with regard to expectations should anything occur due to erosion and, and the home creating debris along the coast or have, or moving the structure at our own expense if need be. Those are, those are, of course, not outlandish requests. We would expect that that would be fall on the owner, not the county or any other public domain.
Okay, thank you. I had a question for Mr. Love. So for, for this kind of construction, are there extra criteria that you take into account for stability? Just as, as an expert designer of these homes?
There's a couple different, well, more than a couple of different foundation systems that you can use typical, single-family house. And depending on the conditions, and our geotech engineer recommended, one of the recommendations was to use a matte slab with thickened edges for the house in this particular site. As far as the bluff retreat, no, there's no special conditions for that. The bluff is a hundred and twenty or a hundred and thirty feet away from the, the footprint of the house. And at an estimated erosion rate, bluff retreat of probably averages a foot a year. You know, we're talking about a hundred and thirty years. So I think the house will be there many, many years after we are all gone.
So, no, I have, thank you for your comments. I have seen your name on many other projects that have come through the planning commission for that area. So I'm sure you are very experienced in those areas. So that's why I had that question for you. Okay, yeah, I keep hearing different numbers. In one of the reports, it said ninety feet from the bluff. You mentioned a higher number, but, but that's fine. Yeah. Thank you, Mr.
Commissioner Gupta, just on that point, I think there's the measurement to the property line and then the measurement to the home itself, the footprint of the home. And I think that's why I see two different numbers.
I see. I see. Okay, okay. Yeah. Yeah, also being in zone one, zone two, the drive-in zone one and, okay. Understood, understood. Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Ketchum?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hanson?
I don't have any more questions. I want to, I want to say that the applicant has made me feel comfortable that he understands the risks and challenges he's going to face. And, you know, these coastal developments is the thing I worry about is being fully aware of what's in front of you. And I think you've demonstrated that to me.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Love, I'm in construction, so I understand. But I wonder if you could just do a brief description of what a matte foundation entails? So that maybe we can clarify some of the.
Yeah, a matte foundation is a typical slab-on-grade foundation, but it's twelve inches thick. I think we're all familiar with houses that are built on a slab. And usually that slab is only six inches thick. In this particular area where there might be some minor settlement or, or something, or minor movement, the geotech engineer, in his recommendations, recommended a twelve-inch-thick concrete slab. And in areas of higher loading around the edges and bearing walls, it's actually thickened to thirty-six inches, I believe, under the, under the wall. So it's a very robust, very strong foundation that will bridge any irregularities, settlement. And so we follow their very experienced recommendation based on them doing years and years of work here on the coast. Very familiar with it, Sigma Prime.
Okay, well, thank you for that description. Appreciate it. I don't have any more questions either. At this time, I think we can open for public comments. Janet, could you please allow people to come in?
No problem. We're not opening public comment for this item. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand. I do see several people on the line, but no one with their hands raised. So once again, we're opening public comment. I do see several people on the line, but no one with their hands raised, so once again, we're opening public comment for this item. Um, if you wish to say something or speak, now is the time. And share, there's no one with their hands raised.
Okay, um, I think I would like to kind of play a motion to close public comment on this item, just to make it official.
So move.
A second.
There's some motion, a second, uh Janet, please do a roll call. Janet, you muted.
One second, um, Commissioner Gupta.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanson.
Hi.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Hi.
Chair Ramirez.
Hi.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you, um, well, I think that now um we can have our uh commissioners discussion at this time uh on this item. Um, uh, Mr. Hanson, would you like to start?
Um. As I mentioned a little earlier, I think the client is fully aware. Uh, the design has been approved by the local. Board, and I'm not gonna make any more comments on that, the um. People living on the coast have unique risks and unique challenges, and I think they're both. Physically and mentally aware to take them on and. Since they are aware of it, uh.
Hi Glenn.
I welcome them too.
Yeah, I'm in the middle of a Zoom meeting, can I call you back in a while? Hey, can you mute him, please?
Yes.
Thank you, yeah.
So, um, unless I hear something from one of the other commissioners, you'll have my support for this.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Ketchum.
Oh, thank you, um. I I just want to thank staff for adding the coastal hazard conditions of approval for this rooftop parcel. Per expectations of the coastal commission, um, this was, um, since I wrote. Uh, on Sunday of my concerns, um, and anticipating what I don't know continuance, any whatever things appeals. All the things that could happen, uh, this is great, sure smoothed out the process and particularly as we. Go through this time where we have a an LCP LCP policies that are. Pretty out of date with coastal commission guidance, um, as long as we have this process and we're going to add these conditions and and. This will work much more smoothly, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. Um, Ms. Gupta.
The applicants and Mr. Love. Uh, explained to me satisfied what I wanted to. Hear from them that they are fully aware of their risk and their responsibilities. Uh, as far as this project goes and the. The design, I really like, it's very aesthetically pleasing design. Um, they have taken care of all. I I the the two things that I really liked was how they have taken care of. Providing uh privacy to the neighbors by. Putting their windows and putting the plants in the right places. Also, uh, even though there's only one uh covered garage, they have provided ex- extra. Driveways for parking so that parking, so the cars are not parked out on the street. So it's it's a very beautiful design and I'm I'll be supporting the project, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Gupta, thank you. Um, yeah, I I also in in uh design wise, I think I always uh. Tend to like Mr. Love's uh approach to the way he designs, I I think this is no exception, I think it's a pretty good. Design of a of a house for this particular area. And just for staff, I think in general, I I would make a recommendation that, you know, going forward, we keep an eye. Um, you know, when we get projects that are this close to the bluff, um, that that we keep this uh. Conditions um that we have added, uh, just so that it's, you know, it's just an automatic and we understand what we're dealing with. Um, and with that, I'm just gonna say, yes, I too will uh support the project. So I think we have everybody's comments, so I think we can uh have maybe someone can draft a motion. For the project.
Can we have the motion up? Can the motion be put on the screen?
Yes, I was just gonna ask, Glenn, do you have that motion handy on your, could you share this uh slide with? Motion on it?
Oh.
Or the recommendation, the recommended action, I think.
Okay, so I'll share my recommended on the screen.
Thank you.
You go on.
Okay, I'm sharing my screen right now, and as you can see on the screen, that's my recommendation.
I'll make the motion then. I so move that the planning commission approved the proposed coastal development permit, a non-conforming use permit and design review permit. For county file number PLN twenty twenty three ninety-two, by adopting the required definitions and conditions of approval identified in attachment A of the staff report. And the additional conditions discussed in the vendor random dated of April twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
No, we have a motion and a second, Janet, can you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Gupta.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanson.
Hi.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Hi.
Commissioner, uh, sorry, Chair Ramirez. Um, Commissioner Ketchum.
Hi.
Thank you, motion passes.
Yes, the motion uh passes unanimously, um, congratulations on on your project. And good luck. Uh, okay, so we can move on to our next item, which is correspondence and other matters.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and I let me just uh end that item by saying thanks to the applicant and Mr. Love for being accepting of the additional conditions. Once again, my apologies for the last minute nature of that, and as suggested by Chair, we will make this a. A regular practice to check for the proximity of the bluff and and address this in a more timely fashion, so. Thank you, Mr. Love.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks. Uh, no additional correspondence to report beyond what the you received today. And as far as our agenda next uh. Next meeting. We have um. A a number of items, I'm um trying to refresh my memory as you speak.
Actually, can I bring something up? Wasn't there something uh on the um board? The boss's agenda that was appealed from that we.
Oh, yes, 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 I was gonna get to that. I was gonna get that, I I I think the order of the agenda.
Oh, okay, that's right, that's right.
The study session and then director's report, right?
Yes, all right, sir.
That's right.
And I apologize on that, right?
No problem, no problem.
Go, go.
I emailed that over to you, so if you check your email, it should be on.
Okay, yeah, thanks, well, I am excited to say that as part of next meeting that we will be receiving a presentation on um. Connect the Coast Side, um, so it's a big milestone for us and um. Looking forward to a discussion on that. So in addition to Connect the Coast Side, uh, I'm just pulling up the agenda right here, uh, we've got. Uh, let's see, a new uh. Single-family residence in Miramar at three forty-five Miramar Drive. Um, and that's a requires a adoption of a negative declaration and approval of a coastal development permit and design review. We also have um. The item that Commissioner Ketchum has been asking about related to resolution of um. A violation that's occurred at the um propane facility adjacent to Pillar Ridge. This is AmeriGas um propane, actually the owner is Buck's Butane Propane Services, and it's um. And after the fact permit to legalize development that's occurred on that site. Then, uh, we've got two more uh items, that's includes a new residence um. In Emerald Lake Hills at two thirty Silvan Way. And a coastal development permit for a new residence. On Ocean Boulevard, so wait, oh, that's a mistake, Janet, sorry, commissioners, uh, looks like. It got carried over, that's the item we just considered, so um.
I also wanted to mention that there is an information session um regarding the. Community Climate Action Plan also scheduled for um for this meeting.
Wow, okay, we we might need to take a closer look to make sure that we um keep it within a reasonable timeframe, um, and if. Uh, it was to go over lunch, would there be any objection by the commissioners about taking the lunch break and then having a couple of items in the afternoon?
I don't have a problem with that, I think we've done that, so unless the other commissioners have any issue with that.
Okay, I'm getting the thumbs up and um. It's, okay, that's great, I really appreciate it, um, you know, the more items we can get done, the more we can keep. Progress rolling, so I.
That means we get a, we get a break on the next one, right?
Yes, um, we'll we'll try and keep the next one a little more reasonable. Um, so moving on to the director's report and what occurred at the board supervisors last week, so. Um, as you may know, the Parks Department appealed the planning commission's decision to deny the off-leash dog pilot. Project, but um I think they, the Parks Department heard the commissioners' concerns loud and clear. And although they weren't able to change the pilot program that had been endorsed by the board. Um, while they were before you, when they went in front of the board, they said, hey, if you guys are okay with this, we are we are willing and happy to. Modify the pilot program to be at Quarry Park only, and there was unanimous support uh for that, so. Um, I think your uh action had a lot of um important input on the results here, and so thank you for that. Um, they also considered the um Dinar General Plan Amendment, zoning amendment, grading permit. And um subdivision, oh, I'm I've been corrected, it wasn't unanimous support. Supervisor Groom continues to have concern about dogs in our parks, off-leash dogs in our parks, so there was no vote there. So, um, as I was saying, um, the Dinar project, you might recall, is the sixth unit um. Town home development right off Woodside Road. Uh, that needed to be approved by the board because it required a general plan amendment and zoning amendment, and um that was approved on a three-two vote. So, uh, I'm also happy to report to you that we've got two new planners in our office, Catherine Castro Rivera. And Zachary Rybal, they started with us uh this weekend last. I think at our last meeting, I also mentioned to you, uh, we have another new planner named Sam Becker, so um. That's three new staff members I'm thrilled to have on the team and um look forward to them presenting to you and also um. Look forward to being able to make better progress on some of the long-range planning projects you heard about while I was out from Melissa because. Having these additional resources will enable um them to take care of the many permit issues we have to deal with on a daily basis, so. The uh two other things I wanted to let you know about, um. The department is working with council and agricultural commissioners' office to on some updates to the cannabis cultivation regulations. Um, we uh went to the Agricultural Advisory Committee on Monday and the Pescadero Municipal Advisory Council. Last night to update them on these changes, and they're basically minor clarifications to the regulations we. Previously adopted, I think the significant change is that it's with regard to distribution, so the county has limited licenses to cultivation. You need a special permission to distribute um the cultivated product. And what we were hearing from the growers was that um by having to sell it to a. Middleman, if you will, to deliver it to the other facilities, they were losing a lot of the um. Income that they had otherwise expected to gain, so it just simply allows the cultivators to provide more direct sales. Um, and uh, that. Change is outside of the zoning regulations, it's outside of the general plan, so it's been acted on solely by the board of supervisors. Uh, it doesn't come before the planning commission, so if you have any questions or issues about it, please feel free to share them with me or my staff and we'll be happy to try and address them. The final thing is, um, is, as you know, the county's been busy with a lot of capital improvement projects. Um, there's a couple groundbreaking ceremonies today occurring, um, one of them being the. What we're calling the Navigation Center, um, this is at a site on the east side of Highway One that's going to provide. A top-to-bottom services for the homeless or the unhoused, um, it will provide facilities to. Uh, take them in and provide, you know, emergency shelters, but also to provide the health. And care services that they may need and to work to um get them into temporary and then permanent housing, and. This is a real big milestone for the county, um, the county received something like sixty-five million dollars from the state to make this happen, so. I think this is a really important project, and so it's great to see the groundbreaking occur today. That will happen at eleven o'clock, in fact, so if any of you wanted to run down there to catch it, I could uh. Uh, send you the invite, the other one that's occurring is um at three o'clock this afternoon, it's at the um. McGuire Jail, there is an old portion of the building that will be gutted in in the interior. And renovated to provide new administrative spaces for the sheriff's office, so um. That will be going on right when the county is making really good progress on um the new office building, if you've been to Redwood City on campus, you. May have seen some of the progress that's been made on this new office building, which um. The project development unit is offering tours of, so if any of you would like to take a tour of this new structure. Uh, it's really a beautiful structure, it is involving primary wood construction, uh, and I see Commissioner Hanson raising your hand, so. I'm happy to facilitate that, so um. I will reach out to um the director from PDU, as we call him, project development unit, and. Try and find a time that's good and let you know and be happy to invite you, so. That concludes my report and be happy to take any questions.
Okay, uh, any questions from commissioners, uh, Commissioner Ketchum, go ahead.
Oh, um, Steve, the the new planner, she said Catherine Castro Rivera, and who was the other one?
Uh, Zachary Royball. R U Y B A L. Who um happens by coincidence to be the son of our assistant um building inspection manager. Um, they uh uh previously lived up in Yerika. I was lucky to hire Kevin to come help out in the building division. His son was working as a planner up in that vicinity and wanted to get back to the Bay Area and um uh both very professional, high-quality employees that the county is lucky to have.
Would it be possible to uh update, to send, give us an up-updated, um, what is it? The chart that shows uh the planners and who their supervisors are and how that all comes together with the current names? Um, that's really helpful, you know, all of a sudden a new name comes up, and well, where do they fit in this uh hierarchy?
Yes, be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, give me a a week or two because we got some shifts going on, but as soon as it's ready, I'll be happy to share it.
And the other thing is that it will help clarify who left because we don't get that announcement, and all of a sudden, you know, you send an email to somebody and get a bounce back. What happened to him, you know? Uh, so that will help.
Yeah, I apologize for that. I guess I'm always focusing on the positive, the people coming in as the people going. But um, yeah, no, that that's a good point, and I I will endeavor to keep you posted on that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hanson, any any questions?
I have a question.
Good.
There was, there was um appeal by uh green foot hills to the California Coastal Commission on one of the projects that we had approved. Uh, this was at the last, I guess, March meeting. Um.
Yes, oh, um, thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Gupta, because um you that is likely to come back before the commission. I um, if I put in the pieces together correctly, um, it went to the commission and the commission um was generally satisfied and determined there was no substantial issue with the appeal, but nevertheless, there was interest by the appellant to make sure that the record accurately reflected the action by the commission, because you might recall there were um recommended conditions by mid peninsula, open space, as well as some other conditions that had been floated, and um when the commission acted, the motion didn't specifically incorporate those conditions, and so I think um the applicant is willing and the appellant is really desiring for the commission to refresh its action to make clear what are conditions of your approval, and so um I expect that will be coming back before you in the near future. If some, it takes a different pathway, I will update you on that.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure if it's the same one you and I are talking about, but I don't have the other details. But this is, this is the one you are mentioning. Okay, okay, then I remembered it, then we can talk about it.
Yeah, that's the one off Skyline, right, where um?
Uh, no, this one was more speech.
Oh.
Maybe she, maybe she's talking about the one, two doors down from what we have on our agenda.
I think so.
Because there was a letter of decision on, because the conditions of approval were just added right there at the last moment on the, in the presentation, and um and they were, there was confusion were in the wording because it referred to the commission, the Coastal Commission and the executive director of the Coastal Commission, and that was part of the appeal. And then there was a revised letter of decision, county decision that came out December thirtieth, I think, that uh fixed that wording, and I mean, that was, I think perhaps that's what she's referring to.
I I I think you're right, and I apologize. Um, there's been too many appeals. Um, the um, but yes, that's um what happened was when we decided to incorporate the Coastal Commission-recommended conditions, we uh incorporated them verbatim, which really didn't make sense in account of the fact that the county, not the Coastal Commission, are enforcing the terms of the permit. So we, that was just a administrative error that we corrected, and I, with those corrections, all parties were satisfied and the appeal was resolved.
Oh, that is always a good outcome, right?
They do, well, um, maybe I'm speaking too soon. Commissioner Ketchum, do you have a different understanding?
No, I just want to add that um it would be helpful, I did ask uh the planner for the revised letter of decision, but it would be helpful uh not only for all the commissioners to see that, but perhaps can that be added to the um meeting, the Planning Commission meeting page with the staff report? Could the, could the letter of decision be put there? Uh, I mean, it would seem to me like that would be useful on any project.
Oh, yes, I I I totally concur. Um, I think one challenge we face when we look back at the record is, if you just look at what the report that went to the Planning Commission was, it doesn't necessarily reflect what the decision of the plan was, and so the letter of decision uh wraps that up and will identify any changes made by the commission, so I I think that is a good idea. I'm getting a thumbs up from Janet, so it doesn't sound like it's gonna be problematic for us to do, so.
So, so this would be routine for all our decisions to have the letter of decision posted after the fact on the, with the meeting materials.
Yeah, I I concur with that recommendation. Janet and I will work on making that happen. I think the practice that we've been using for the past in case, um, you know, because this will only help us out for the items moving forward. For those that went before, I believe you could get to the letter of decision by looking up the case in our online database, the Excel database, and then looking at the attached documents. So.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, um.
If I may, um, through the chair, uh, a supplement to the director's report, I thought I would give the commission a quick update on the status of remote meetings.
Okay.
Um, I know that's a matter of some interest uh by many members of our uh boards and commissions. Um, and you'll hear this uh by other means as well as the county tries to roll out information about um a return to in-person meetings and what that's going to look like. So just very briefly, as I'm sure you all know, there was what the Brown Act required before March of twenty twenty, which typically was that if you were going to participate remotely by teleconference, you had to follow some pretty onerous requirements about posting the remote location with an agenda and making sure it was open and available to the public. Um, so every remote location had to be available to the public for them to be physically present with a commissioner if they were participating under the rules as they existed prior to March of twenty twenty. What the governor's executive order did in March twenty twenty was allowed a new form of teleconference, the one that we're experiencing now, where uh not not just that everyone is participating by teleconference, but that each teleconference location need not be publicly accessible. And that was true for the entirety of uh the period between March twenty twenty and October of twenty twenty-one, when the governor's executive orders on the matter expired. And instead, a new state law, AB three sixty-one, was put into place that allowed every board and commission to make its own decision about whether to continue with remote teleconferences, and those are the resolutions that you've adopted at each meeting since uh October of twenty twenty-one. The thing that's changing is that the adoption of an AB three sixty-one resolution to allow for remote teleconference without having public access at each public, uh at each teleconference location requires that the findings include that as a result of a declared state of emergency, meeting in person would present a risk to the health and safety of meeting attendees. And it's expected that the governor will rescind the emergency declaration that has been in place since March twenty twenty. We don't have perfect information about when that's going to occur, but the signs indicate that the the emergency declaration will be rescinded by the governor probably at the beginning of June of this year, which means that if nothing else changes, the option of participating remotely will change back to the pre-March twenty twenty rule, meaning that if you wish to participate tele- uh by teleconference, you'll need to comply with the rules as they existed prior to the pandemic. There are two bills currently pending in the legislature that would change that and allow remote teleconference without public access to the teleconference location if a physical space was offered for members of the public to participate in the meeting. So it would basically roll back the requirement of public access to the teleconference locations if there were in-person meetings that were being held with some of the members participating remotely. And what we've heard by way of feedback uh from other members of of boards and commissions is not that they are fearful of being in a room with other people and they want to return to um in-person meetings. It's the concern that if they develop symptoms that they're pretty sure are not uh COVID nineteen, but would appear rude to show up to a public meeting um uh sniffling and coughing, they would like the option to participate remotely if they themselves believe they may present a risk to others. So we're hearing that people want to have the option to teleconference on an ongoing basis, or at least have the ability to do so if circumstances uh require it. So it's not necessarily that people don't want to be in a room together. It's that they definitely don't want to be precluded from voting uh on important matters because they woke up one morning with the sniffles. And we're hopeful that the legislature will fix this, but as it stands now, those bills are currently in committee the last time I checked. It continues to be our recommendation that you adopt AB three sixty-one resolutions until the governor suspends the state of emergency so that you have the option to participate telephonically, but the entire county is trying to mobilize to allow for what we're calling hybrid meetings where members of the public are allowed to participate by remote teleconference because the rules don't apply to them anyway. The Brown Act doesn't require uh that they be in person in order to make comments. That's at the discretion of the agency, but also to allow members of the Planning Commission and other boards and commissions to participate uh remotely if there are good reasons for them to do so. Um, so we're working on how that's that's gonna look. Uh, there have been some um uh technological hurdles to overcome because it's not as simple as projecting a big screen and running a laptop with uh the remote attendees appearing in person. The audio issues, uh, some of the other issues are um still being worked on, but the Board of Supervisors is leading the way uh for trying to get back to um having the option to be in person and having the option to participate telephonically, and um we're, we will make sure that um whatever solutions they strike upon, because you get to benefit from use of their board chambers, will likely be available to you as well, but that's just an update about where things stand. Uh, we're going to continue to recommend that you follow staff's recommendation about where we are in terms of uh the technological feasibility of holding the meeting um with the understanding that, you know, we would like to return to um having an in-person option at least uh as quickly as is feasible. Janet, Steve, anything to add to that?
No, thanks for that. I learned something new. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Thanks, Tim. Um, I um, I trust that you will keep us um informed and uh well-advised um going forward. All right, um, I guess if there are no more uh questions for Steve at this time, I think I'm gonna uh adjourn the meeting. Um, and so it's ten oh four. The meeting is adjourned. Uh, thank you all for tuning in, and please reach out if you have any questions. So we'll see you at the next meeting. Bye-bye, guys.
Bye, thank you.
Bye.
Bye.